All right, everyone. I can see and hear it's four o'clock. So I'm going to call the March 22, 2021 Select Board Meeting to Order. And will Dean Hodgkins, oh, I guess we need to elect a pro pro temp clerk this evening. And I know, do I hear a nomination for Jane Hodgkins?
Nominate Jane Hodgkins as our pro temp clerk.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I'm going to call the roll. In this case, on this item, Matt Johnson.
Aye.
Terry Ackerman.
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye. Jane Hodgkins.
I'm not sure whether I can vote on this, but I will accept.
All right, that's unanimous, and the clerk so declares. So thank you, Jane, for being our clerk pro temp tonight. So Jane, will you please open by calling the role who is present?
Will all those select board members present, please respond present. Terry Ackerman.
Present.
Linda Escobedo.
Hi, present.
Matt Johnson.
Present.
Myself, Jane Hodgkins, present.
Okay, and that is for the five select board members with Susan Bates not being present for the benefit person taking the notes. All right, the consent agenda reads as Town Accountant Warrants, March 18, 2021, and the West Concord Junction Cultural District Designation Renewal with the Mass Cultural Council. Do I hear?
I want to make the move, the motion, but I also just wanted to say, as someone who was involved in the initial designation, I'm excited to see the redesignation. So I move to, to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
All those in favor, please say aye. Terry Ackerman.
Aye.
Matt Johnson.
Aye.
Linda Escobedo.
Aye.
Myself, Jane Hodgkins, aye.
Okay.
Susan Bates, absent.
Okay, that's for our select board members, as noted by the clerk. And the chair so declares. All right, time for the town manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hope everybody get to enjoy the weather a little bit over the weekends. I did, well, if I enjoyed doing yard work and making my allergies substantially worse, then yes, I did enjoy it. So I did submit a printed report that you should have in the packets. The written report itself is relatively brief, but there were a number of attachments of note. I think the most significant of those was the, just an updated letter that was submitted on behalf of the nine towns currently working on regional vaccination clinic, application of DPH, with some great follow up information. You know, originally, we were looking at doing two towns, two sites, one in Acton at the former Kmart Plaza, and then our existing site at CCHS. But DPH made it clear that they strongly preferred one site. And so in discussion with the other area managers and health directors, we settled on the Acton site as the more advantageous because it is available during the day, whereas our CCHS site is limited really by the school schedule until at least June 16. So we do have that listed as our backup site. And it is a long letter, and I want to really commend the health directors, especially our health director, Susan Rask, and her colleague in Bedford, who really took the lead on compiling all this information. And, you know, you can see from the map that there's not really a lot of vaccination sites in the area represented by the nine towns. And, you know, there's a lot of great information about the resources that we have put together to be able to conduct this clinic. And it's really, in some ways, just getting the nine communities together and developing a detailed plan, you know, in the time which we've done is its own, you know, measure of success. Even if they said yes tomorrow, I don't think we'd see doses probably till mid to late April, according to the guy, she from DPH. But there'll still be a need for vaccines even at that time. And so we're still hoping to be, to have the opportunity to provide this important service for our communities. So I don't, there's any questions on specifically, but it just, we'll, we're still working on it, I guess, is where I would say. The other thing is, the governor has, you know, introduced additional eligibility, including essential town employees, I think are eligible today, which is all well and good. We're not vaccinating anyone because you don't have doses to do that. But, you know, there, people should really check the eligibility list because there was last week, a number of significant changes or additions were added. And the reopening guidance has certainly been altered greatly as well. I think performing arts venues can open to 12% capacity or something like that today. So we're still, we're back in that phase where things are happening really fast and trying to assign some time to decipher what they mean and provide some guidance to the community. So that's, we will be doing that on an ongoing basis. And then you can see that there's a couple of larger projects that are underway, a couple at CPW, we are redesigning Hubbard Street. That's a complete streets project. It's going to be a big improvement when that gets done for that area. We are having an internal conversation about, you know, parking on that street and as a part of the redesign, so there'll be some more to come on that. And then, of course, the Jarrow project was bid, as the memo from Kate Hodges indicates, the bids were somewhat favorable. We are doing a little more due diligence on the bidders. You know, some of the, some of the per square foot pricing was a lot higher. So even though we haven't, even though we have the budget to the project, it seems like on a per square foot basis, they were, I want to say exponentially higher than what we are estimating. So that's something we want to spend a little more time looking into. And so we'll be doing that in the coming days. And then Marshall Rask, we said, put in a report about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the last, kind of last half mile of two C and two D. You know, there's some concerns about fencing there and issues with mass DOT. You know, what they're willing to provide, and that's going to be an ongoing conversation as well with DOT and the town and the neighborhood. And, you know, I think we all were, you know, a number of us were part of congratulating the West Concord Five and Dime on their end of their historic run. And now that building's next chapter is in the phases, first phases of being rewritten as a part of an expansion of the natural gourmet. And so that purpose site planning process is underway at the PLM as well. And then it's not in my printed report, it really, but after I submitted, I did have some additional conversations with our CFO. And I think it was at the preview meeting, I was asked if we thought there would be a budget transfer warrant article. And at that time, because the budget was still being developed, I said I didn't think so. But as things have evolved, I think we're pretty clear that there will be a budget transfer memo for, in part, legal services, but also for other budgetary transfers that will need to be made. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up because you're going to be closing the warrants this week. So I wanted to let you know that there was going to be a budget transfer article in there. So that's it briefly for me. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more. The intake work on Nagog Pond will be starting, I think, in a noticeable way this week. So if you travel up route two A, you'll be able to see some of that happen.
And just so you can remind everybody what the intake work is, because Nagog has been a very long process. That's not the site development. This is separate. So I just thought maybe you could give two seconds on that.
Sure. So there's, there's, I mean, the, the town of Concord's investment into our water infrastructure at Nagog Pond is, the plan, and maybe we've invested a lot in that, in that infrastructure, both in the watershed, the area around the pond and the pond, and the, in the equipment at the pond itself. There are two significant projects that are planned. One is an intake project where I think the original works that kind of drew water in from the ponds and then put it through our pump station and treatment, and then into our distribution system, needs to be replaced. And when I say original, I think going back to the 30s, I think it's very old. And so we went through a fairly complicated design and permitting process and involving the town of Acton as well as DEP. And got all our approvals and are now moving, bid out the project. It is, it's a lot more than, I think we thought it was going to, than a town, I should say we always here for the original planning, but the costs have escalated for a number of reasons, but we finally got approval to do it. We're moving forward. And that will replace basically the end of the pipe that's deep in the pond that draws in the water. The other phase of this is a new treatment plan. And that has not gone through the permitting process fully. It has, in part, in terms of a site plan, has been, has approval from town of Acton, but that is a separate phase. And, you know, the costs on that have gone up significantly as well, just by virtue of time. But in a somewhat backward way, the delay has probably benefited the town in that new regulations regarding what they're calling PFAS, PFAS, or forever chemicals. A lot of discussion happening right now about the impact of those chemicals. And then the state is now starting to regulate them in our, in our water supply, which requires a higher level of treatment. Had we built the plant, the treatment plant, when we thought we were going to, we would already be looking at making modifications to deal with PFAS. So in some ways, the delay has made it so we'll be able to accommodate that new treatment, those new treatment requirements in our, in the plant whenever we actually get to a place where we can build it, which I would hope would be in the next couple of years. We would break ground on that, but that's in the term.
We're operating under a waiver now.
What's that?
We're operating under a waiver. That's, that's.
Correct. And a, you know, we have an ozonation process with a temporary, you know, structure that's been there for a number of years. So, but the, we just said we need to focus on the intake. It needs to be done. We're looking at, you know, potential system failure. So it's good that we're out there doing that work.
Terry?
That's very helpful, Stephen, on Nagog. And I am finding these town manager reports to be really helpful in getting us up to speed on a whole bunch of issues that I feel a lot more connected, reading it, that I, that I have more knowledge what's going on. So in particular, the regional vaccination site, that was a lot of great detail in that. And thank you, Linda, and Stephen, for putting the renewal letter for the cultural district on so quickly. I think it was on within 12 hours of the. My two questions are, the Jarrow project. It sounds like it came in significantly under budget, and yet you're saying the per square foot costs are higher. So I was a little confused about that. That's my first question.
Well, I think we, the bids came back Friday afternoon. In fact, I held off on submitting my town manager's report to get that information. And so, you know, it was bid opening, Kate prepared her memo and sent it in. And then I think since then, they've kind of gone back and looked at it in a more detailed way. And so I probably, I think in hindsight, would have held off on submitting the information. I know there's a lot of interest in the Jarrow project, so we wanted to get it out as soon as possible. And sometimes being, you know, quick can lead to, you know, information being not fully ripened, so to speak. And so I think it's, and I just talked to her two minutes ago, and she can follow up, you know, we can follow this up at another meeting, maybe next week.
Okay, yeah.
But she didn't, she didn't say that, you know, they were looking at it a little differently and, you know, checking references and experientially. But we wanted to just, the bid opening is a big day on any project, and we wanted to, you know, based on what we have today, the project could proceed. And that's good, that's important. But, you know, is there more analysis that needs to be done on the bids to say, are we really getting the best value for the taxpayer's dollar? And I think that's where we are now.
Okay, so yeah, I appreciate you getting it out right away. And I also appreciate that more analysis is being done. And when we figure that out, if we can get the update, that would be great.
Sorry, I don't, I mean, Kate is actually here. If you wanted to ask, I'm sure she can answer some of that. I think she just.
I don't know. I don't see Kate here.
She in the waiting room, maybe?
No, doesn't look like she's here.
Well, it's okay. I am.
All right. We can talk about, yeah, we can talk about, we can, let's talk about it next week, then.
Sure. And, yeah, I just wanted to understand because it seemed like it was under budget, but the cost per square foot was higher than expected. So I just trying to sort that through. So my other question was, there were two pages in your report that I didn't, I had a lot of questions on, and it seems like from what you just, that they're going to have to do with the budget transfer. These are paid free cash. And so maybe add future meeting, or I should touch base offline with Carrie. I'm not sure which is, oh, Carrie might be here. I just had a lot of questions about those two pages. I didn't understand the context of them at all.
Which two pages?
Okay, which pages are they? Let's see.
The auditor's reconciliation of budget lines? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, pages 18 and 17 in the packet. Free cash calculations is what they're called. And I really wasn't sure why we were getting these. Is this got to do with the budget transfer you were talking about? And what percentage is free cash of the operating budget? Just a whole, so a lot of questions about these two pages because I didn't know how they fit in.
So Terry, I'll just comment that I happened to notice that this is on the FinCom agenda for Thursday evening as well. So that may be the more appropriate place for all the questions.
Well, let me just say what the, what the document is. And then, so basically, the state sends out the certified free cash tabulation. That's from Division Local, DOR, Division of Local Services. And it does, the board chair gets it, we get it. And I just was, it's just an FYI on what our certified free cash is. That's all. It's a document from the state.
Okay. All right. Well, I will touch base with Carrie offline and maybe attend the FinCom meeting because I do have some questions on it. So rather than take up the time now. Okay, thank you.
I, I am here. Sorry, this is Kate, if you want me to answer that.
I'll defer to you, Linda. We can either come back at next week or.
Yeah, I think we were already talking about coming back next week, but thank you, Kate, for checking in.
No problem. Sorry, I was on MMN, so that's why I was so confused. I hit the, I'm on my phone, so I hit the wrong thing. So I was there, but not on your screen. I was watching it through MMN.
That's fine. Thank you.
No worries. Thanks.
Thanks for checking in. Okay, any other questions for the town manager's report? Okay, there we are. No, okay. So I think we'll move on to the chair's remarks. I just want to comment on a couple items, and that is the item that the town manager already reported on, which is the conversation for the regional vaccination site, as well as the item that was in his town report regarding the conversation with mass DOT. And the fencing issues along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, et cetera, are two examples of the amount of time and effort that goes in from town staff for issues that are ongoing over a long course of time, for, in this case, particularly the regional vaccination center, of high import and concern for our town citizens as a whole. And I'm pointing this out this evening because of some recent conversations about various efforts that we're doing regionally with other actors on various topics. But there is a time and place for these regional activities, and particularly when it meets priorities for our own citizens. And so I just wanted to note that. It also ends up affecting the capacity of our town staff getting to some of the issues that the select board raises and wants on immediate agendas. And so it's just, I just want to balance that picture for, for what we're coping with. And the other thing, there was already, already reference to this, that, and most people are aware of this, but the warrant does close on Friday, the 26th, and I just want to remind everybody of that. I will, and that, remind everyone also to vote on Thursday, if they haven't already voted. Thursday is the election day for town, local town elections, on March 25th. And then I would also, I'll be commenting more about this in my liaison report. But I want to elevate it to the beginning of the meeting so it doesn't get lost. And that is, as the schools are gearing up to have all students return to school, we're also seeing some increase in the numbers of students with COVID infection, particularly at the high school. And as I reminded at the chair's meeting this week to all of the committees, it is helpful, if this is highlighted in your committee meetings, to get the word out to, because there are different constituents that attend all our committee meetings, and as well as this meeting, that it is important that the community continue to do their part in terms of vigilance and following protocols so that we can get our students back to school. And that concludes my chair's remarks.
I would just add to that, Linda, that this is especially true because spring break is just about to start. And not only do we know that there are a lot of college students enjoying spring break right now, who will be coming home, or coming back perhaps, to do some kind of virtual piece, but there may be families with them. And our own public school spring break is about to start.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the IT security update. And I think we have Justin Bulger here with us today. And did you want to introduce this?
Sure. I think you've all met Jason Bulger, our Chief Information Officer for the town of Concord. And I have reported often, I think almost weekly, about work that we've been doing in the cyber security front. It was, it was a focal point of our FY22 proposed budget. And we've also had to report, unfortunately, on a number of issues that we've had with certain outages and things like that. So there's been a lot of, you know, stuff about our cybersecurity and technology efforts. And I thought it would be good to, and I think it was requested by the board, to have Jason here to kind of give us the, maybe a little lower than 5,000 foot level, but just kind of give an overview of where we really stand in terms of not only cybersecurity, like working to, specifically cybersecurity, but also how are we managing our IT resources? And what changes are we looking to implement? And since, as you will find out momentarily, he can articulate them way better than I can, I thought it would be best if he presented directly to the board, and then we can get into some Q and A afterwards. So Jason, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, can I share my screen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's see, can you guys see my screen now?
We can.
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be before the select board here to talk about this. I appreciate your interest in technology and security, and I'm always happy to come and explain where we are, what we're working on. You know, I wanted to talk specifically about security today, and a little bit about how kind of I know where we are, because I am, as you know, pretty new here. So, you know, the first thing we need to do is understand, I need to understand where we are, and that is a good benchmark, is to compare how we were doing with technology with, compared with other municipalities. Also, how do we stack up against the cybersecurity frameworks? I'm going to talk a little bit more about those. You know, what controls, policies, and procedures do we have in place? And, you know, how do we integrate with other departments? And that is, you know, some municipalities, IT, they provide computers and mice and keyboards, and that's it. Other departments work very closely with the business tools, automation workflows for other departments. So, you know, how, how well positioned is IT with the other departments in terms of supporting them? And then finally, what's the state of our digital infrastructure, our software, our hardware? So in addition to that, sort of me looking at, you know, things, we're also getting third parties to come in and say, okay, where are we? And as you can see here, everything so far has not been at any cost to the town. The first two were a network audit and active directory health check provided by a vendor that works with the state to provide these services for municipalities at no cost. And so far, these both came back great. They were looking to see if we had any evidence of malware infections on our network that we're maybe communicating with command and control servers outside of our network. And then also our directory, which is how we manage all of our users, our security, our permissions. You know, how is that doing in terms of, are we following best practices? So far, those came back really good. We also now are participating in the National Cybersecurity Review, which is something that the Department of Homeland Security orchestrates. And it's a way for an organization to see how they rate on about 168 different controls. And they really want to see what maturity level you're at, at various controls. Because, you know, you might informally do something where maybe somebody in a room has a spreadsheet, or you might actually have a documented process that you follow, that you, you know, follow up on annually, and maybe is accepted policy by the board, for example. So you can have a lot of different maturity levels. And so, you know, it's not just a boxy check, it's also how involved you're participating in these controls. So we participated in that this year. It also allows us to look back year over year to see how we're improving on cybersecurity. And then finally, we've got a grant from MIA to do a risk analysis and risk committee. So what that does for us is that, you know, this is one of the things that we badly need on our list of to do items, is to classify the data that we have in the town of Concord, and also determine which services and, you know, servers and applications that need to be up 24/7 versus those that are not that important. So we need to look at everything that we have and assign, you know, a risk to it so that we know what we need to protect and where we can allocate those resources. So see, there's, these are some of the steps that I've taken to improve cybersecurity since I've started. The first one was to adopt the NIST cybersecurity framework. You can see the little colorful image there represents the five functions of the NIST cybersecurity framework. And at a, at a broad level, this really just is the gold standard for cybersecurity framework that really tells an organization how they can understand what needs to be protected, understand that it is protected, and then know what to do if something goes wrong. So we are working toward achieving compliance with that, and that goes hand in hand with the National Cybersecurity Review. I've also created or revamped some old and out of date security related policies and procedures, things like data destruction, or, you know, even setting up new devices. Instead of just sort of a bulleted list, you really want a policy that's documented and accepted by multiple departments. We also started adopting encryption at rest on all systems. The guidelines usually tell you that any laptop or portable device should be encrypted at rest, so that if somebody, you know, were to fall in someone else's hands, that they couldn't have access to the data. But we went a step further, and any device, desktop, server, anything, if we have data, it's encrypted now. We also applied for and received a cybersecurity awareness training grant, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that here. So this is a state funded program. Last year was the first year that they did it, and it was a huge success. I actually participated in another municipality, and I can tell you, it was a great program. It's going to result in the cost savings of about $12,000 for the town of Concord, as this was a program we were looking to do for the last few years, and actually was in the early draft of my proposed budget. And it's a nine month program. It started this past Friday. You probably have all seen the emails. And it goes through the end of the year. It consists of four modules and some phishing simulations. You know, we used to think in IT that a good firewall and antivirus was the best you could do, but now we know that our security really lies in the hands of end users and the decisions that they make. And, you know, it's important to empower them so that they have the tools and knowledge to understand what is good cyber hygiene and what is not. So this program has some great short lessons, you know, animations, slides, and then there's some questions. It goes hand in hand with the phishing simulations. We receive reports on participation. Another added benefit is that our insurer, MIA, does offer a credit on our general liability insurance. If we get certain level of participation, it's usually about 80% on a given module. And they don't tell us what the module is until, until we're there. So if we do get high levels of participation, we're going to see some cost savings on that. And this is going to contribute to an overall better culture where people feel more comfortable reporting things that are suspicious and asking questions if something raises a red flag. Other steps we've taken is properly segmenting the network through access control lists. You can imagine Concord. You can imagine Concord has a pretty big network. We have lots of buildings. All of these buildings need to access servers, they need to access other computers or resources. But really, the best practice is limiting given devices' access to only what it needs to have access to. The town of Concord, when I started, was kind of open. Once you got inside the network, you could move around pretty freely. But we know now that in terms of limiting something bad that happens, it's really important to make sure that each department really is isolated and only each resource can only access what it needs to. We've also started a risk based approach. Instead of just, you know, blanket protecting everything, let's understand where we have the most sensitive data and the things that are the easiest to get access to from the outside, and let's start focusing there. You know, we had computers that were of two thousand and eight and earlier vintage. So retiring those old devices that can't be patched or updated is very important, we've done that. And then just creating a proper inventory of hardware and software. As you know, Concord partners with an MSP, a managed service provider, to provide some IT services to the town. They maintain an inventory of sorts, but they have a different purpose. It's not for compliance, it's for business reasons. And they have different retention schedules. You know, once a machine drops off for them, they don't care about it because they don't need to support it anymore. But the town wants to know that history, they want to see who had a device before. You know, if a user says, well, I had the software on my own computer, we need to find a way to get that back and have a paper trail there. So we now have our own inventory that scans automatically that we can own and maintain. And then this project of migrating to Office three sixty five is another big piece of the security puzzle. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that now. So Office three sixty five, when we talk about that, and you can remember the numeral because it's how many days there are in a year. It's really cloud based file and email storage. So we currently maintain eight servers for file and email. There's actually a few more that do incidental file storage, but eight primary servers, four email and four file servers. Those servers are going to be migrated to Microsoft's online platform. Now, those servers that we own have to be maintained, they have to be patched and updated. And when they're patched, they take between four and eight hours for a complete patch on all four mail servers because there's a particular order they have to be performed with reboot. So you can imagine trying to find an eight hour window when you can take this down for regular maintenance. It's kind of a nightmare. And what that does is it means that things don't get patched as often as they should. When I started, we were on a cumulative update seventeen, which was released in two thousand seventeen. So it hadn't been really done for four years, three and a half years. So when we have this online, patches happen instantaneously because they're upgrading the entire, you know, filter through which all of your data passes, and they can do it instantaneously. So it's going to mean that things get updated quickly. We're not going to experience the downtime. And when there is downtime, it's not like staff are going to be running around crazy. It's going to be, you know, a twenty minute delay and Microsoft's on top of it. And they've got, you know, dozens or hundreds of engineers working around the clock to fix these things as opposed to us trying to scramble at two in the morning because dispatch can't, you know, access their email. So along with security, you also see that the pandemic has highlighted this need for people to access their data outside of the town of Concord network. And that creates a huge liability when you have to open the firewall to let people come in for these resources. So as a result of the recent exchange vulnerabilities, for example, with at least thirty thousand US based organizations already showing signs of infection, you see how important it is to try to offload these services where you can to ensure you have high levels of security. In addition to the email, file services will be migrated as well. And the real benefit to this is that today, files exist in many places. We have file servers, and that's great if people use them. But files end up, you know, in download folders on people's laptops and in personal file shares that aren't really visible to other users. And when somebody leaves your organization, you scramble to try to make sure that you don't lose any of that data and then it gets carried forward. We're not simply copying some folders to the cloud. We're going through an analysis to make sure that we classify data according to its sensitivity level and that everything goes where it should and that everything goes off of, you know, various folders and devices and gets cataloged appropriately. And once that's done, we have, you know, state of the art data loss prevention rules that we can put in place so that we can see when files start to disappear or when they're shared or who they're shared with. Today, that's a logistical nightmare. If you were to ask me who has access to a given file, you might run one report, but then you look at the parent folder has different permissions and that happens to be nested in another folder with different permissions. So this isn't simply, you know, copy to the cloud and right click and you're done. It's we're really going through all of our data and understanding what we need to keep and what the retention period is. We have some great resources in town and the clerk's office who specialize in data retention. I've been working with them closely as sort of a pilot group to work with alongside IT to sort of make sure we do this right and that we work with each department individually. So that was the end of my presentation. And I just wanted to say I'm happy to answer any other questions anyone has as a result of that.
Thank you very much. And who would like to start with questions, Matt?
Sure, just to say thanks so much for your presentation. A lot of this is music to my ears. Moving to a cloud based solution for mainstream file and email work, segmenting the network with access control to actually have the data encrypted at rest, which would have saved us a huge amount of concern in the past when we lost those laptops, disk drives. And so these are all kind of current practice, best practices that we should be applying. I did have a question, though, about the change now where we're moving more to having these hosted or better yet, cloud services. And we're less reliant upon our own servers and our own software in house. Does that change the game for our managed service provider? Are we looking at changing strategy there as a consequence? It seems like we're kind of moving to a different model of outsourcing than we had before. And so I'm curious about the implications for that. And then the second item is, you know, the case that we have with many volunteer participants, constantly changing roster of employees, that, you know, there are programs that sort of bring your own device type of approach. To what degree is that applicable here? What do you think are both the possibilities and the constraints or limits that we will reach? Because I don't think that we can achieve the levels of security compliance that, you know, a corporation could, for example, because of this sort of open group that we have. But it's also essential to our way of working.
Yeah, yeah. On the first question about our hosted services affecting our relationship with our MSP, it definitely will change over time. I think you're going to see more of a gradual shift. We are in year two of a three year agreement with our MSP, but we are charged on support for the number of servers that we have. So we would see an impact on that, you know, each year as the number of servers decrease. We're always, because we have so many departments that we support and so many unique software programs from, you know, fuel tracking software to GIS, we're going to still maintain a pretty robust onsite server environment for the foreseeable future. But you're right that we will see fewer and fewer, you know, servers coming onsite, especially when you look at the financial software. We'll probably be taking a hard look at the hosted, cloud hosted option there, especially since we have so many different buildings and departments. So I think it will definitely impact how we go forward. And I think that we'll take the next year and a half to look at that so that when we go out to bid again, you know, we can think about the next five to ten years instead of just where we are today because it is going to change. And then on the volunteers and employees and BYOD, I think Office three sixty five is going to help in a huge way. We're going to have access to Intune. We, you know, a lot of organizations who go with Office three sixty five just buy the standard, what's called E three, which is like a base license and get that for everybody. We worked very closely with our current MSP and with various vendors to make sure that we got the right license for every user. So the average personal trainer is going to be a different license than the average IT department user, than the average clerk, than the average police officer. So we have different levels of licensing. But every level comes with something called Intune, which is a mobile device or device management system so that we can put policies, access control policies on every user on every device. So even if you do bring your own device or we have a laptop that maybe the town of Concord didn't procure, we can help set up a user to provide certain limited access on that device without worrying about the liability that the town would have in giving them access, you know, say to a network or file share or bringing them onto the domain on a device that we didn't purchase and own. So it's a lot easier when you have this environment versus the one today.
Okay, thank you. Actually, though, I did want to mention, I mean, it seems like there, even for those in-house servers, there are infrastructure as a service options out there to just get rid of the hardware. And then secondly, there even now I've seen advertised endpoint as a service. Basically, you just, yeah, it's like leasing a car. You just lease your laptops as a service, basically.
Yeah, the hardware that we have right now was purchased just before I arrived. So I think it's going to last, you know, three to five years. So I would definitely say before we think about replacing any hardware, you know, with our with our active directory syncing to Microsoft and Office three sixty five, we can easily spin up an Azure server and, you know, just migrate some of our servers online. I think that when you, you know, we're going to do the cost benefit analysis on that when it comes time to replace hardware. But, you know, when you look at that, especially with Concord's environmental goals, you know, when you when you look at a data center like that, that's completely carbon neutral versus us having to maintain two or more data centers, it becomes advantageous for us. So.
Well, and disaster recovery and so many other.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, when it comes time to replace anything, that will be in our long term strategy for sure.
Terry.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Jason. I have several questions and I know they say there's no such thing as a stupid question, but I don't have the background, so some of these may sound. My my real question is, it sounds like we're offloading a lot of the risk of hacking or malware to Microsoft. Like, what happens if their whole system gets hacked? Are we just offloading risk and we pay them to fix it or what?
Not exactly. So and one thing, I'm glad you mentioned this. We are actually in the GCC, which is the government cloud. So Microsoft maintains a completely separate cloud environment just for government entities. And that reduces any chance that if something was configured improperly on their end, that maybe, say, a business could kind of move laterally along their environment, you have to be vetted and go through a process to get onto that GCC. So that in itself means we're going to be more secure than the general population. But our file services and email and email services running on the cloud is definitely going to reduce our liability, but we're still going to have clients and workstations on our local network. So the fear would be that if you, even if you're working completely online, if you did download an attachment or if you, you know, were working with a file that was in three sixty five, but you're working with a locally that had a macro that was, you know, malicious, there still is going to be some risk. You still need to look at endpoint protection. You still need to train your end users to have a good cyber hygiene. But it definitely lowers our cyber liability for sure.
If you look at what they can do versus what we could do, there's no comparison.
Right, okay. And what will the cost be of this to maintain the system over the years? Will it be a higher operating cost per year or the same as what we have now or what?
Yeah, so we did some initial ROIs on this. And, you know, it's hard because they like to throw in the benefit and the how much money you save on streamlining. And it's true, you know, municipalities just like to look at the bottom line and the cost. So depending on which number you look at, we're either going to be saving, you know, five million dollars a year or it's going to break even over ten years. It is definitely a more significant ongoing annual cost. But as Matt was saying, if you look at the long term costs of maintaining an infrastructure, you know, a long time ago, we thought, wow, it's so cheap, we can just buy all this stuff ourselves. But now when you factor in the liability piece of that and you look at the maintenance piece of that and you look at what the hourly engineer gets paid for after hours work and you look at the, you know, when something goes wrong and it takes ten hours at two in the morning to fix and what the cost is, and then the loss of downtime for four hundred plus employees, we now realize that it is actually much cheaper to offload these services into the cloud. But it's harder because, you know, CapEx used to be the way everything in municipalities was funded. And so you'd ask for fifty thousand dollars, you'd get a server, and then you'd be good for five years. That model just doesn't work in this climate anymore. So we do have to think about it differently, but in the long run, we're not going to pay more money for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jason's right. It's a much higher cost than you operate. And we talked about this, I think, when we first presented the budget. It's a much higher annual cost, but when you look at not having spends, you know, five hundred thousand dollars on a single server replacement. When we, and as you mentioned, we have a large number of servers, some of which aren't going to be replaced as a part of this. There is definitely reduced exposure. So I think, you know, when Jason showed me the the Microsoft, you know, their agents, you know, cost benefit analysis, I didn't put a whole lot of stock in it because we look at it differently at the local level. But it's a paradigm shift. And so we're not doing it to save money, we're doing it to protect our data and our network. I think Jason's right. I think in the end, in a way that probably can't be quantified as we sit here tonight, we will end up being better off financially. But as we sit here tonight, it's just an investment that we're making in our security.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So how long will the migration to three sixty five take? Is this like a multi year project and disruptions might be expected for committees or the public?
I mean, we're going to try to do our best to limit service disruptions. It started today, kind of was the kickoff. And the email piece is going to go first. This happens in stages. I did send out to those people who have a town of Concord email address, I sent out a link. It's really internal only, but it outlines the project plan and the steps that we're going to be taking. And we'll be sending out a lot more information before any users actually impacted. But we're going to do email first. That's going to be entirely behind the scenes until we're ready to cut over. And if you use webmail, we're just going to give you a new URL. If you use Outlook, it's going to tell you something changed and it needs to close and reopen, and then you're going to be done. That's the goal. So that part will be relatively easy. The file piece, we're going to be working hand in hand with each department to do that on a department by department level. We're going to hopefully start in the next maybe month. And we're going to just, I can't really commit until I know how it goes at the outset. We do have some tremendous resources assisting us with this project in addition to the IT department. As I mentioned, the clerk's office and Nate Smith over there, the archivist. But I can't really say, but the goal is definitely this year, it will be done this year. But I don't know if it will be two months, four months, five months. But, you know, it really depends on how smooth we, of a process we get in place and, you know, how quickly we can do that. And it might be the type of thing where ninety percent of it is done in, say, two months. But then there's that last piece that we kind of have to do very carefully as we classify maybe sensitive data. But in terms of interruptions, I'm hoping that the average end user experiences just a few minutes of inconvenience for the email piece and the file piece will be working with you individually.
Okay, so to follow up, so that sounds good. So you said that everybody with a Concord email address would have received something today. Would that include committees?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't send it today, I sent it a couple of weeks ago. But, yes, so everybody who's on a board or committee. And, you know, some of those, the way that those mailboxes work might change. But again, we're going to do the ninety percent that are easy first and then we'll address the ten percent that might be unique if maybe three or four people are sharing an email address. We have different options for that. It can continue to be a shared mailbox or maybe we're going to splinter it into something different. So I'll be reaching out to people who have board and committee emails, different than the select board. You guys have your own individual emails, but there are some committees that kind of share access to a single email address. So I'll be working with those people individually.
Okay, and then my final question is, that nine month training period with the modules and the phishing simulations, that sounds really good. Is that being offered to all the employees who are using Concord computers?
Concord, as long as you have a Concord MA.gov email address, you are signed up for that program.
Employees or committees also?
Everybody who has one, so yes, including committees, board members, yep.
Okay, but we haven't gotten notified yet about about that training, right?
No, you have, some of you have already completed it. So I know some of you have gotten it. I can double check on yours if you haven't received it, Terry.
Okay, thanks a lot, great.
So Jason, to that question that's on the floor right now.
So Jason, to that question that's on the floor right now, there, you talked about there was internal communication to individuals and select board members, et cetera. There have been two different communications received regarding that. Is that correct? And is, what, could you just confirm that?
Yes, yep. So, I mean, there's two different projects we're talking about, the cybersecurity awareness training. I've sent out a couple of emails on that and including one this morning, just to clarify the sender email and name and email address that you'll be receiving that from. And then also, I know I shared it with SMT and I'm pretty sure that we sent it out, but I'll make sure that everybody's received the overall Office 365 project page, which includes an outline. You know, part of this, in addition to just adding to our security and making sure that we're following best practices, we're also going to have the benefit of having new features like chat, which we don't have today, project planning, project pages, so we can share information, SharePoint sites where we can, you know, have a true HR portal where we can post documents as an intranet for people. So we don't, we don't really have a great use, a great application for that today. But this is going to be one because it's going to be anybody in our organization can, we can share with this. So, yeah, I'll make sure that everyone has information on that.
Okay, good. And then another question I have has, and this is minutia compared to the total cost of everything you're dealing with. But you, in your presentation, you mentioned the $12,000 savings, you mentioned the grant opportunity. And I'm also interested in other potential sources of funding for this outside of our own budget.
Yeah, so, I mean, we did apply for and receive authorization to get the Office 365 licenses for the first year through the CARES Act. I know that they were doing some, you know, moving around of the money and analysis to determine if that was the best pool of money to pay for that with. And I don't know, Stephen, if you know where they ended up with that? Because they originally put it in there and then they took it out and then they might have put it back in there. There's also the American Recovery Act money, which I don't know yet what the parameters of that spending is. But this is something that does escalate a remote work. So that is something that the CARES Act and Recovery Act, you know, covers. So we might have the ability to pay for some of this through those monies. But I don't know where we ended up with that.
Well, I, I, I'm not 100% certain where we ended up. That did move around a lot as Jason noted because we did have some existing IT funding. But the other thing I'll say is when it comes to the annual licensing, that is something that we would maintain out of our operating budget because it is an annually recurring cost. I think if there were one-time costs, like the cybersecurity training is, it's, I mean, it's not a one-time training, but it is a kind of upfront thing. And so a grant to do that is very helpful. But if it's an ongoing cost, we would carry that in the operating budget.
Okay. I, thank you for both of those responses. And I do know that we're still waiting for some clarification of how some of those funds can be used. So I'm sure you'll be looking at the opportunity there as it presents itself.
Well, let me say, if there are, if the CARES Act or the Next Round, the Recovery Acts, if it is eligible to be used, I could see us offsetting some of it to, to reduce the impact in a, in a single fiscal year. And if there are future grants, we would certainly apply for them. I don't want to say that. But I don't want to say that the, that the, the project is reliant on outside funding and it is something that's going to be built into our base operating budget. But we certainly will pursue other opportunities to supplement the funding through grants or, you know, other funding streams.
Very good. Any other questions? Well, Jason, this presentation was timely and very much appreciated so that we have some sense that, and not that we didn't have the sense, but we have a little more detail that you're on the job and, you know, aware of some of the key issues that we're all concerned about. So thank you so much.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next agenda item is application for home funds for Commonwealth Ave, CHA. And I believe Elizabeth Russ is here to address that.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everybody. I am Elizabeth Russ, the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office, and I'm here.
Liz, let me just say that we certainly have had the opportunity to see you on a number of occasions here, which is great. Just be, it shows the amount of work that's being done in terms of the leverage of some of the funds that have been available to get some of these projects done. And I, this is a good example of looking for some outside funds to leverage our own funds. So thank you for that.
Sure. Good introduction. Thank you, Linda. I'm here with Liz Valenta from the Regional Housing Services Office and also Mary Ann Nelson. Sometimes it's hard to see everyone, but I think I saw them before. So I'll just start, I think you have a memo and a short, a short, you know, presentation in your packet. I'm going to just start. So the, I'm sorry, let me just get my, my information here. So this agenda item today is to request your support for the Housing Authorities' application for $88,345 in additional home funds for the construction of the Affordable Rental House at 367 Commonwealth Avenue from the Consortium RFP. So I'll describe a little bit more of what that, what that means. The Town of Concord is a member of the West Metro Home Consortium. And the Home Consortium is a group of 13 communities that receive federal home funds. Home is the name of the federal program, the HUD program, and receives those funds through the consortium that's administered out of Newton. Concord gets, you know, about, it varies every year. It's a formula-driven funding process and gets about $25,000 to $30,000 of funds every year. And Concord is given those in an exclusive use manner and can use those towards a project. When there are funds that communities haven't used, that, you know, have gone through exclusive use over one year, they then pool into a competitive RFP pool that communities can apply to if they have projects that are ready to take those funds. Concord has used this competitive RFP process a number of times. The Peter Buckley Project, some number of years ago, I'm going to say five or six years ago. And that these home funds were able to offset CPA funds that had been appropriated to the project. So I think that's what Linda is really specifically referring to, that these home funds have the ability to, you know, bring in other sources of funding. The Junction Village Project also applied for the competitive pool funds. And now there's funds available. There's an RFP process right now. And so the Jarrow property is also applying for these funds. So I think that maybe that's a good background into the whole program and to the context of this particular request. And I'm going to turn it over to Liz Valenta to talk about the particular project. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us come and talk about the proposal here. The home funds, as Liz mentioned, this is really additional funding that's available through the consortium, through the general pool for the project. You probably all are familiar with the project that's already received CPA funds and also housing trust funds to support the project. But this would provide additional support and funding for, which probably is a increase in, in cost for the project due to the ongoing inflation of construction costs. So we, for this application for the home funds, we took a look at, a closer look at the budget, working with Rick Eifler and Mary Ann to really see if there was a need in the project for additional funding beyond that, which was already allocated from the town through the CPA and the, and the housing trust funds. Part of your packet had that updated project budget. So you saw there was some increase in cost. There were, in the architectural and design, there was an increase based on actual proposals that have come in from the architect. There's an environmental engineering line item, and that actually was part of the home requirements. Home will require that a 21E be conducted in an environmental review for the property in order to receive the home funds. It's required as part of the federal regulations. And so that was added into the project in terms of cost. We did do an extra line item for the soft cost contingency. And then in construction costs is where the, the greatest increases can be seen, primarily in the housing construction cost. We really looked at the square footage costs and I had some recent costs from some local projects that really suggested that the pricing, prices have increased for the construction. So we increased that, that cost for the house construction. And, and then accordingly, the, the contingency line item was also increased. So that brought the total budget to the $466,345. And then you can see again on that sheet that there's the project sources to match that, that increased project cost. The Town of Concord has already allocated home funds. Those exclusive use home funds that Liz had mentioned, the FY22 home funds are $28,000. So that's already part of the project. And then for this application, the, the application requests additional home funds of $88,345. And then on the next page, it just talks a little bit about the timeline and that's been updated. Just looking at finalizing the, the design and the zoning approvals through the spring and the summer. This application going in for the Home Consortium. And then sort of summer, fall, continuing the project, submitting for the local initiative program, completing the construction drawings and going out to bid and then being ready to award the construction contract this winter with the spring, next spring, starting construction.
So I, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Were you almost done or?
I was. I was just going to say that I was going to turn it over to Mary Ann, but I'm happy to take questions before I do that.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I had two quick questions and one is, I noted in the application towards the end that you cite one, the unit will be added as one SHI unit to the town. And isn't this project resulting in two SHI? And I was wondering if that would strengthen your comment in that section.
So they, so this, this is really looking for the construction funds for the one unit. But you're correct that there is a second unit on the site. So there will be, when the LIP application goes into the state, it will be for the two units. The one that's existing, the building that's existing that's already been occupied and rented through the Housing Authority. And then this, then this new construction unit will also be included.
Okay. And then did you intend to say spring 2022 and then winter 2022? Or did you mean winter '23? I wasn't sure about that.
I was just thinking that spring 2022 and the, the construction would be complete by the end of the year.
Okay. Okay. Was there more to this presentation?
There is a little bit more. There's the slide, the, sort of the, the project slides that I think you're all pretty familiar with it, but if Mary Ann wants to add anything in about the project.
So I think you're all, most of you are likely familiar with the project. So it's, our plan is to build a two-bedroom, single-family, affordable house over on that property. I can give you the status. Right now, we have done wetlands mapping and we have just hired the architect. And we're working with him now on design permitting. We hope to have a more revised budget from him probably within a week.
Okay, good. And I, I think you're here today to ask for our support of this home application. Are there any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I just had one, which is, you know, we had this discussion about the Jarrow bids being evaluated and then the timeline for this unit. So just wondering if there are any interactions between the project schedules that there need to watch out for? Or is this something that can be managed completely independently?
Yes, there, we are aware of that. And I think Liz Russ talked to Katie about the schedule. And that was a little bit while the construction schedule was pushed off a little bit. Just wanting to have that project complete before moving forward with the house construction.
It's really about the road, the work on the road and the access. That's, that's really the point of intersection between the two efforts.
So you need to get the new access road in first and before you can really start the construction here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and sorry, and just to add to Bill's point, that aspect of the, of the bid, of the bid for the Jarrow project, those actually, there's park improvements, which the road is a part of, and then there's the building part of it. And so the park improvements were the favorable part of the bid. The bathroom building is the part that was a little higher. So that road project could conceivably go forward. Where's that? That's one of the things we have to sort through this week. But we are, I know Kate is mindful of making sure the road gets built and that this project relies on that completion.
All right. And Liz, was it, there's no potential problem with receiving the funds if in fact that deadline was extended?
No, I think, I think it's, you know, the project is, is in place. It's pretty, you know, there are some things to wait for, but I think that the, you know, the risk of it not going forward is pretty low.
Okay.
You'll see, you'll see this project twice more. Once, this is really to apply for the RFP funds. Once all the funds are put together, they need to be committed in the, that's the term they use and voted through a funding agreement that will require your support and as well as the LIP application will also require your support.
No wonder we see you so often.
Yeah, it's a step-by-step, always with your support and, you know, updates as we go through.
All right.
I just wanted to jump in and say, one, yay, this is exciting. Having been part of the Jarrow process from the moment that it was a twinkle in the West Concord Advisory Committee's eye, not necessarily even imagining the opportunity to add another low-income family home into our mix. And this is exactly, you know, this is a great, a great step forward. And I also wanted to, and I'm hoping that it is not a, you know, a graphic available today and gone tomorrow, that the preservation of that one large tree in front of the two, the two spaces, I think that's a wonderful opportunity. I hope, I hope, as I said, it was not just simply a, an accident of presentation.
So noted, I'm sure. All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Jane, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry. Let's have it. Move to support the Concord Housing Authorities' application for $88,345 in additional home funds for the construction of an affordable rental house at 367 Commonwealth Avenue from the Consortium RFP.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Myself, Jane Hotchkiss, aye.
Great. And that is four votes in favor and we have one absence today and the chair so declares. Thank you all for your presentations and good luck with your projects. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the library administrative code revision. And I think we should have Lindsay here with us today. Lindsay Howard is here, yeah?
Hello, everybody.
Welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you, Linda.
So I know that your committee has been working on this for a while, so we're happy to see you here today. And so why don't you proceed with your introduction? That'd be great.
Certainly. So I appreciate the select board's patience as we work through this. I think this was first on an agenda back in early November. But I'm very happy that we, we've had some time to get some input from a variety of folks. And that is what you see before you this afternoon. The language on the marked-up copy of the administrative code was provided by the trustees with the intent of just making sure that we were keeping our, our style consistent with other documents, other similar documents from the library. So you'll notice a lot of the edits are more stylistic in nature. There are some more substantive edits to bullet point four. And those really just provide some specifics around areas such as language, such as staffing and operating costs, just to make sure that everything was very clearly spelled out in the, in the agreement there that you have. We reviewed it as a committee last week and are all in support of, of the version that you have in front of you with those markups.
Okay, either, thank you for that. And I do applaud you for putting this in a more contemporary form, I would say, that's consistent with many of our other committee charges. And, and more importantly, that you were diligent about making sure that it complied. And and more importantly, that you were diligent about making sure that it complied with the existing library and agreement that we have between the corporation and the town. So thank you, thank you for all of that. Any comments or questions from board members? Jane?
Maybe it's my reading of the red line that's missing something. But on, on point four, there's sort of a for blank act as a liaison. I assume that's still in in determination, and that's why we don't have anything there? Let me just. The library.
I think the blank is just the tab formatting.
Yep, I was just double checking on the clean copy. It it's just, I think it's just because there was work done in both Microsoft Word and Google documents. So I think the formatting on the red line is just a little, it's just kind of funky because of the the two different programs used. But if you look at the clean copy, it should just say act as a liaison with no tab there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Lindsay, could you just say a little bit more about the item that refers to the special advisory committees?
Yes, just bear with me here.
That's a number nine?
Yes, I think that this largely hopes to address the, the library's intent to to work with a variety of organizations in the community to make sure that we're getting as much input in a variety of areas as we can and incorporating those into the work being done at the library.
Okay, but and and your intention is come back to the select board for approval?
Correct, when needed, yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Are you ready? Okay. Move to amend the library administrative code. Administrative code according to the revisions in the materials, meeting materials dated March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Jane Hotchkiss, aye.
And for select board members in attendance today have approved this. And we have one absent select board member, and the chair so declares. So thank you very much for all the work that's been done on this and good luck for the new chapter here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the parking enforcement discussion. The select board originally approved. What's the word I'm looking for?
Suspension of enforcement.
Suspension, thank you, suspension of the parking meters in operation through March thirty first. And so we're walking up to that time and we're, we now need to talk about how we proceed from this point forward. So Stephen, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, thanks. So, you know, we've talked a bit through the budget process about the revenues associated with the parking meter fund and the expenses that those revenues usually paid for and and the impact that's had on the FY twenty one budget and the planning for the FY two twenty two budget. You know, the, the, the reasoning behind the suspension of enforcement to begin with was the restrictions on capacity for businesses that were part of the governor's orders. And we are still in a state of emergency, and I think everyone should be clear, even though the restrictions are being loosened, we are still in a state of emergency, both at the state level and local level. And while things are looking better, I think there's things happening in Europe right now in terms of additional surges that we need to be mindful of. So, so I, I, I think that even though the capacities are being increased, we are still watching to to make sure that we're taking appropriate action. I think in terms of the parking enforcement, we have seen activity, I think, return, although not to pre-COVID levels, but it is returning to downtown and to all the business districts. And so we feel like it now is a good time to start resuming the enforcement. And I want to also highlight the the kind of overarching thing, which is the reason why you have parking meters and enforcement is to make sure that parking space is turnover. And so people can have access to parking in business districts on a regular basis. So somebody who's gonna be there all day doesn't take up a a space that should be a thirty minute space. And so it's, it's the turnover in parking for the duration of a lot of meals or other retail transactions. That's, that's really the, the reason why we do that. And all municipalities do parking and meter enforcement. It's revenue generation is is secondary to making sure that, like I said, there's, there's a, a healthy turnover in spaces. So we think, looking ahead, we also know a number of communities around us are are turning meters back on, so to speak. And so looking ahead, we discussed it internally. I have talked to some of the business associations, economic vitality committee about this, and did give them a heads up that we were looking towards resuming parking meter enforcement. And in talking to Chief O'Connor and other town staff, we kind of settled on the twentieth of April as the day to, which is, which would be the day after the holiday weekend for Patriots Day as the kind of a sensible, right fit time to resume meter enforcement for the business districts and and I think for the for the commuter lots as well, that, that parking has not come back as strongly as I think some of the more, you know, some of the more retail and restaurant spaces. Because I still think that we are, that we, I do think we're gonna be in in an economic recovery mode for a while, for the foreseeable future. And I do think that restaurants have really, are really still way behind where they they would be in in old times. There is a need to continue to support their efforts. I do think there's gonna be a reluctance by a lot of people to to dine in a restaurant based on, you know, mostly anecdotal feedback, but also some studies that I read about kind of in the reporting on COVID. And so I do want to make sure that we have an opportunity for takeout as well. And as you know, we we instituted takeout spaces in front of a number of restaurants, you know, kind of upon request. And I think I'd like to have the authority to continue to maintain those takeout spaces as we see how recovery goes and parking demands increase. So I think that those are the two things that I would be asking for. Resumption of parking enforcement or of meter enforcement on the twentieth of April. And then approval to continue to maintain and evaluate the takeout space aspect of that. If, for example, a particular restaurant that has a takeout space decided that that, that that parking, that that meter would be better served as a space for a patron or or just have it be better served as a regular parking space, we can take the signs down and and have it go back to that way. But I think it's having that flexibility and in really a time that we're gonna enter into that nobody's really been through. It's, it's having that flexibility to do that is important. So those are the two requests that I would have.
Okay, Jane?
One question on that, or actually question slash suggestion, which would be if, if the decision is to resume parking meter enforcement at the end of April, which I don't necessarily have a problem with. One of the things we do historically over the course of a year is have, you know, free weekends or periods of time that we do not enforce. And I think the more, and I would assume that the retailers would agree with this, the more we could sort of calendar that so that we know, I mean, some things will be different. I mean, we could not have predicted the pandemic. But I would imagine that having a, some kind of ability to look at free weekends is also a way to both remind everybody that we have non-free periods of time, but also to publicize once again some of the ways we're supporting the retail section.
I, I think that that's something that we should certainly, like I said, the, we're gonna have to figure it out as we go. And it's gonna be based on, I think, demand and what the recovery looks like and how, you know, if we sense that people, that people really do want to get back out and go into restaurants and shops and everything else. So I, I think, Jane, you're right. That is something that we will look at. And, and, you know, we have a very robust dialogue going with the business community. The only, the only hedge I would put to that is on off switching of enforcement can create its own level of confusion. We heard feedback about how people didn't know about it, even though we had publicized it, I think, pretty broadly, which, like most things we publicize, people also feel like they still don't get word of it. And so I, I, I want to avoid the confusion of kind of an on off switch of charging and not charging. So I think we'll engage the Economic Vitality Committee and, you know, the business partnership and some of the other stakeholders in an ongoing discussion if we decide that. Because I have heard the feedback that the sidewalk sales are something that were beneficial. And I think, and I think some of the, the business districts would like to do more of. So I could see something like no charging during a sidewalk sale event or something like that. But this is all new territory. So I guess what I'd say is, the answer is, yes, I think we'll consider all options to stimulate economic recovery. And it's not just downtown, it is West Concord, it is thorough. So, yeah, I guess, like I said, I, I, I think we need to be very flexible and open to different scenarios based on, you know, conditions in the field.
Any other comments from board members?
Linda?
Yes, Carrie.
So I definitely support the continued curbside, I don't know what you call it, the modification we made for takeout for the restaurants. I think we should definitely continue that for the indefinite future. I also like Jane's idea that we think about free weekends or maybe just the sidewalk sales. I'm, I'm really in favor of as much free parking as possible for customers. And I don't want to get into that whole big philosophical discussion right now. But the other thing is the commuter lot. As you know, we don't have a lot of commuter trains going on right now. The service has been cut back. So maybe we aren't ready to start enforcing that one right now either. And I'm curious to know, I know we have a contract with these people that do the software and hardware for the meters. How many years are left on their contract?
I, I'm not sure. We just, we just entered into it fairly recently, like, I mean, just before the pandemic, we entered into it. And I, I'd have to check to see if it was a multi-year contract. I think the assumption is, it is, I think the, I think it was a multi-year agreement, but I have to double check that.
Right. Well, I think when it's time to renew the contract, I think we should discuss as a board whether, you know, what the business community wants to do and what the select board wants to do going forward, whether we want to continue or not. And by then, I think we'll have enough data on the recovery from the pandemic. So that's just a future item, but.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead.
No, finish your thought. I'm sorry, Terry.
Well, I guess I'm just in favor of promoting the businesses and making it as easy as possible for customers to park. And if that means delaying the April twentieth, a few more months, if it means free Saturdays, free sidewalk sales, curbside for restaurants, I'm in favor of all of those accommodations to help the customers and the businesses.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up from select board members. So let me, let me comment that. We can segment this in in two different ways. And one is to regarding the, the flexibility that sound manager is asking for, for the working with the restaurants on the takeout spaces going forward. So that's one motion that can be put on the table. The other motion that can be put on the table has to do with extending the non-enforcement piece of it through April twentieth as another part of the motion. And then we've heard from the town manager that he is willing to look at working with the Economic Vitality Committee with us, with others, some flexibility in terms of where would be appropriate for the, the free parking weekends. You know, traditionally, we've done it in the past in December as an example, during the holiday time. And and clearly, we've got some other considerations now with the recovery period. So let me, let me ask the clerk to start with the motion for the takeout. Temporary, temporary program reserving spaces for the takeout.
Okay, I just, I saw some people waving their hands in the public. I don't know whether, because this wasn't part of the, the packet, whether we wanted to. These motions weren't initially considered. Do we want to talk, take public comments or do you want to wait?
Yes, I'll entertain public comment if it's brief. Let's see, Pamela?
Pamela, thirteen Concord Green, promise I'll be brief. I applaud having business turnover, and I understand that's what those meters are for. I hate them. All people who want to browse and shop and wander hate them. They mean we cannot go to a theater event and park at a metered space. So I want to know if there is any actual evidence that turnover is not fast enough on regular weekdays? Because we have the evidence on Sundays when we don't have our parking meters working. Do we have a problem there with not enough metered spaces on Sundays? Then we should stop doing this. It inhibits us. It's an extra cost we don't need and a management thing we don't need. So please, get rid of them. We can, I'd rather support the law that says you can only park for two hours and have somebody hired to get a job to go around and chalk tires and give tickets rather than these meters. If you want to have enforced two hour parking, then use the cameras that automatically send people tickets instead of the, the, the meter lottery system of when you get enforced and not.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay.
Okay, ready to, from my attempt to pull the motion together?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Move to extend the town manager flexibility for working with our local eateries to continue or not their use of a single parking space for takeout. I don't know that we have an endpoint, but to continue to, to engage on the value of that ad. Excuse the other, the other voice in the background, please. And also move to extend the flexibility of continuing our parking.
May I interrupt you just for a second? So sticking with your first, okay. Did, did I hear beyond April twentieth, twenty one through the end of the COVID nineteen state of emergency?
For the, working with the.
Temporary program for reverse, reserving spaces for restaurant takeout?
I, I did not add that, but thank you. Through April twentieth or to the end of the, the COVID restrictions.
Okay, yeah, beyond April twentieth, twenty one, yeah, through, okay. Do I hear a second for that?
I, I have a comment, which is, did we intend that date to be through, well, beyond April nineteenth? And that the non-enforcement of parking meters be through April nineteenth? In other words, they would start the Tuesday as opposed to the Wednesday, which is what it currently states now?
Can I, Linda, can I speak to that?
Yes, Stephen.
So the, the point of the two motions is, if you resume, I mean, really, it could be Tuesday morning, it doesn't really matter. It, it could be, you know, Tuesday morning at the start time, uh, but the date of resuming of enforcement would be April 20th. If enforcement is now back in place, those takeout spaces would then, in accordance with our parking plan and our regulations need to be removed. And so the one motion is restart parking enforcement on the 20th. And the second motion is then authorize the town manager to, um, continue that program uh, until the end of the pandemic. Um, or, uh, really so authorize the town manager to, 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 um, implement those spaces or not depending on the need. So if depend, if the state of emergency still exists and the restaurants say we don't want them anymore, then, then I would just go take, uh, we would end that program without need for additional board action. That's really what the, kind of like the outdoor dining, kind of like besting the, the approval of outdoor dining in the town manager's offices is kind of an extension of that. And that really starts on April 20th when we resume meter enforcement. So that's why we split it onto two separate things.
Yeah, I think though, that the intent in fact was then that you not enforce through April 19th. And then beyond April 19th, you'd have the, the takeout spots.
Right.
So I think that just the date needs to be.
I think you're quite, you're mad to correct about that. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Combine the two as one.
Uh, I, I think that, I think what I would recommend for whatever it's worth is, is that you would, you do the, you do the resumption of, of enforcement first and then do the authorization to, um, uh, manage the, um, takeout spaces separately.
Um, which is previously how we've handled it, um, in prior, yeah. Okay. Jane, sorry.
Starting again, move to, um, uh, approve the resumption of, uh, parking meter enforcement as of April 20th, 2021.
Okay. Yes, let's stop there. Um, do I hear a second?
I, I just think that it, it, don't we need to move to extend the non-enforcement through April 20th? Because the, our current authorization expires.
She said resumption.
Okay. It's just, okay. It's just, I, I look at the motion as written seems clearer in that we had previously authorized non-enforcement through March, right? And now we're saying we'll resume in April. And I, I guess that's okay, but it, I would think that we would extend the non-enforcement through April 19th.
The intent of the wording was to make it clear that it's not going to require an additional action to, that, that enforcement is going to start on that date, not that we're going to hit that point and then need to make a decision. Whereas the suspensions had been kind of open and not open ended. It was a date specific, but the discussion was always when we get close to that date, we'll figure out where we're at. Um, I think we know where, where we are now and are ready to kind of say, come April 20th, we, we want to resume enforcement.
Sure. I just was trying to align it with our previous actions.
Yeah. Um, I think the clarity here that we're looking for is move to extend the non-enforcement of parking meters through April 19th, 2021.
Move to extend the non-enforcement of parking, parking meter spaces, uh, through April 19th, 2021.
Second.
What, well, I have a question about that then. I would vote yes to extend past March 31st, but, um, then I want to vote not to, I, I want to vote to extend indefinitely. You know, or I, if I don't want to start enforcing, um, April 20th. So how do I vote?
Well, you get, you get a minimum of another, uh, few weeks this way.
Right. So it's almost like we need three motions, like the first motion is should we extend?
So you, you, you could, uh, you could, um, not affirm this motion.
Okay, but I do want to extend past March 31st. I, I do want to extend the suspension. So we have, we have three motions, I guess. The first one is should we expand, extend and just the suspension past March 31st, all the way up to April 19th.
I mean, I would say we can always cross that bridge when we come to it, Terry. In other words, as we approach April 20th, we could reassess whether we may want to further extend non-enforcement.
Right. This doesn't lock the 19th in stone. This just says we're doing it until then. Versus right now at the end of March, parking meter would go, enforcement would go back into.
Okay. All right. Then if, if we want to resume enforcement, it would have to come back to the board.
Yes.
Okay.
But no, I think we would not, we would not need to come back to the board.
No, because all we've done is we've acted so far to extend non-enforcement for a period of time. And then that will expire and then enforcement would resume automatically at that time unless we acted.
If the board didn't, if the board did nothing tonight, on April 1st enforcement would resume. Um, and that's why we're saying let's push it out to the 20th to get to take advantage of the holiday weekend. Um, and that, that's why that's our recommendation. And the other thing I would note is, you know, the, the FY 21, um, you know, year end closeout, I think as we prevent, presented in terms of the carry forward does count on some revenues being generated here at the end of the fiscal year from the parking meters.
Right. I understand that, but that's like you said, the secondary goal. I prefer to not have costs for meters or revenue for meters, but anyway.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. And, um, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Oh, I think I'm voting nay. I'm a little, still a little confused. Um, I, I, I don't want to resume the enforcement. So I think that's a no vote.
So this extends it through April 19th?
But it also says that starting April 20th, those, the enforcement would, would begin. And I support that part. So.
Okay.
I'll vote no.
Okay.
Ms. Escobedo?
Um, aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss, myself, aye.
Okay. Um, so that's three votes in favor and one opposed, uh, and the motion passes. Chair, so declares. Okay. Now, um, we're going to address the issue of give, um, temporary program for resuming parking tickets will continue.
To, to grant the town manager the flexibility, uh, to, um, develop and implement a temporary program for reserving parking spaces for restaurant takeout beyond April 20th, 2021. Um, or until the pandemic, um, proceeds.
And I think there again, we'd have to say April 19th, beyond April 19th. Yeah. Okay.
Seconded with that amendment.
Okay. Um, and so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Hotchkiss, aye.
Okay. Um, that's four in favor and we have one absent, um, clipboard member. And so it passes in the chair, so declares. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, the next item is, um, nominations. Clerk, would you please read the nominations?
Nominate Ed Feather of 392 Border Road to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2024. It's a good thing we're, uh, getting our designation in order.
Thank you. Um, and committee liaison reports. Who'd like to go first?
Well, Susan isn't here. I'm going to jump in.
There you go, Matt.
Uh, so I have to report on three different things. Uh, first, the, uh, Community Preservation Committee approved their warrant article. And they spent all, most of their meeting talking about conditions on the various awards that they're, uh, offering to different projects. Uh, secondly, the Concord Housing Authority is in the midst of its executive director selection. And it, the interviews with the final candidates will be tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00 PM. And that's a public meeting. So there are three candidates that have been, uh, down selected and, uh, we hope to arrive at a new executive director through the process. Then thirdly, the middle school building committee, um, had a, a very comprehensive meeting. I'd actually encourage people to, uh, watch the recording if they have time. Um, where you really get, I think, the latest and greatest, uh, update of the status of the project. But there are, I think, two key issues, uh, ahead for the board or for the committee. Um, one, I think that is something to be handled within the committee itself is the selection of a project build, uh, approach, which is, uh, there are two different approaches. One's kind of a hands-off, what they call design bid build, what you saw there for the Jero project, you know, where you, you go put the package together, put the project out for bid and, and pick the low bidder and go. The other is, uh, called construction manager at risk. And that's one in which more of a consultative process that, you know, the construction, uh, agent becomes part of the team um, and is involved with, uh, the process much more deeply, uh, throughout the project. So, um, there are pros and cons to each of those. The, the, um, the architect and the, um, owner project manager have both recommended the design bid build approach. There, there have been other comments though, from the community and, and from others in the other direction. So there will, the, the, uh, group will, um, make a decision, I believe, on the next meeting, which has now been added a new meeting on April 8th. The other key issue, which, um, I have offered, uh, to bring to this board as well as, uh, I think the finance committee will be looking at it and it will be discussed, I'm sure, at the public forum on March 31st. Is the question about, uh, whether some additional, uh, facilities should be added to the project. And in particular, probably the most prominent of those is a request for a second basketball court uh, within the gymnasium. And I think that the, the committee's feeling is, you know, that their charge is to meet the educational plan requirements. And they feel that the current design does that. And yet, you know, everyone I think can acknowledge that there are additional calls from the community for other, uh, facility needs. And that here is a project and, you know, that it could potentially be used to, to meet those. And so that's kind of something that needs to be put in light of overall uh, development of the town's facilities and, um, also just in terms of our priorities of, um, you know, taxpayers versus, uh, users and, and where we come down on those issues. And so I think they're looking for our input and I think at a future meeting, ideally before the April 8th meeting that they have, it would be good if we as a board could give our, our sense of, of that, uh, decision. Um, certainly we're not the only force here, but I think we're sure we're ultimately the approvers of the project. So it, well, beyond the public. So I think we really do owe it to the committee to help.
Okay. Does that conclude your, uh, report?
And that concludes my liaison report for this week. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, who would like to go next? Jane?
Sorry. Um, I'll jump in here with a number of committees, some of which I actually had to miss, but checked in on. So some reports to make, uh, vis a vis chairs or, um, staff updates. First meeting was the, the Board of Health, um, which, some of which was already covered by Stephen in his town manager's report. The only thing I will note is there was discussion of the change of Concord into the yellow and a concern that there might be a rise, uh, in the spring holiday that would impact our, our plans for school reopening, not change them, but would impact, um, that. And then, um, again, there was a reiteration of the challenges with COVID-19 vaccine availability. And, and discussion of the proposed regional vaccine clinic. I think we all know how frustrated the process has been. Um, there was also discussion of the Public Health Department, um, uh, engagement on the Mass Department of Health's, uh, Public Health Excellent Grant Programs to support public health cross jurisdictional shared service agree arrangements, which would be, a great opportunity. Uh, our Director of Health, uh, Public Health was also cautious before folks like myself got enthusiastic that there is likely a, um, we would have to come up with a fairly unique approach to, uh, justify Concord's awarding of this, you know, uh, uh, grant. Since it will, there will be other communities viewed as having much greater need also, um, also putting in for, um, for the grant. So, but I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's never a bad idea to see if we can raise some outside funds. And we've done it in other places when that was exactly the concern. But we did it because we could prove that there was an opportunity to do something fairly unique here. The next meeting that I didn't attend, but, uh, have reports from was the Climate Action Advisory Board. And I'll just compile that with CSAC because, um, you know, the middle sex built, uh, the middle sex, the middle school building committee is making the rounds. So every single one of my committees has some level of a report on. And actually so does my, um, and so does the disability, um, committee. Uh, so, uh, it's interesting to see the different parts of the presentation that, uh, were, were noted by the different committees. And I think that's part of the, the value of that process. For instance, obviously both the Climate Action Advisory Board, um, the, the CAB really focused on the, uh, the design to build, um, and, um, the sustainability me, me, measures involved. And there's a real concern that net zero ready is not conquered. That we should be going beyond and be net zero, um, versus just ready to be. Um, there was also a discussion of the biomass resolution, which I suspect we're going to see fairly shortly. Um, we should, which both CSAC, the light plant and the Climate Action Advisory Board have all supported. And this is a resolution, um, against, uh, purchases from a certain for, you know, a, a, from biomass as a non-emitting or a, a climate, um, choice of energy. But we will see that when it comes to us. Um, the CSAC was, uh, largely reporting in on the home energy services updates uh, and the heat pump case studies, which are moving forward, but with frustration because in COVID times, it's very hard to go house to house and offer the kind of on the ground help that CSAC is known for. Um, out of this period of time, we're also starting to hear, uh, members of CSAC suggesting the potential of trying to combine the, um, the two, uh, the two committees at, into one idea and then action committee. So CAB and CSAC. And then, as I said, the disability committee also heard from the, um, the, uh, the, the building committee and, um, you know, responded, not surprisingly to, to find out more about the level of, of, um, compliance there would be, not just throughout the building, but in all of the, um, like the gymnasium equipments and in, and indeed outside as well to ensure that, um, that, that would be serving all the community members, especially if we were looking at the gymnasium as a possibility for any kind of town events, you know, making sure we're thinking ahead on that point. And then, um, and again, as I said, there's, there's concern about the often disconnect between indoor and outdoor spaces, um, which should be considered equally important and therefore equally accessible. And then the only other can, uh, you know, ongoing concern that the, uh, committee has been raising is that, that we're getting our vaccines. is that we're getting our vaccines out into the community, the homes in Concord, which do not have, you know, which have people with disabilities who are homebound, that we're finding a way to serve in the homes. And then the last committee that I was able to attend was the Natural Resources Commission, which, you know, was, as always, interesting. And probably the most debated point here, other than the middlesex schools, turf fields are still being, are still under review and discussion and still receiving a lot of input. But that the, there is an enforcement order issued on Barnes Hill Road, which is, according to, I believe I heard Delia say that it's the only, it's one of two that she has been engaged in in her tenure as NRC Director. And it was done with great probity. I mean, it was nobody, nobody there wanted to be in that position, but there was a sense of no alternative. And this is, you know, an after the fact enforcement order on a paddock that was created in the Wetlands area. So, and that's enough for me.
Thank you, Jane. Terry.
Okay, first of all, follow-up from Matt. I would very much like to have the opportunity, our board, to weigh in on some of these very important decisions coming in on the middle school. So thank you for bringing that up. So there were a number of meetings. The Light Plant is going to be bringing back their staff in four phases. And the metering staff are back now and the customer service staff is coming next week. And they will be completing the fourth phase in June. And like Jane said, the CMLP did approve by request of CSAC. They want the Select Board to sign the petition. So we will be receiving this petition soon. And it's going to be a town statement to Beacon Hill that we don't consider biomass to be a sustainable resource. So wanting to detail about that, I'm not going to go into all of that now, but it will be, I guess, on one of our upcoming agendas. Another meeting I attended was the CPW. We heard a very good five-year plan for roadway maintenance and repair. There's been a lot of changes to that plan because of COVID. But it's good to be looking forward. Also, the compost site is going to be opening April 3rd for the season. The drop-off without a swap-off will occur on May 15th and require pre-registration. And there are some other April dates for bulbs, battery, mercury that you can check on the website. The Ad Committee, the Spring Forum is canceled and they're doing a series of videos that is going to be pretty exciting. Four farms are going to be featured in the first video and four farms in the second video. And it's sort of based on this film from 10 years ago called What's Growing in Concord. So look for more information for that. That's going to be pretty exciting. MMMN is going to be producing it. And as far as the article that we discussed about the neonicotinoids, the Ad Committee is really not going to support that article. They don't believe that we need this article now that the state has taken action. They want to see what's going to happen with the new state law that requires you to have a license in order to apply this pesticide. So they think that might solve a lot of the problem. And they think it's premature for the town to have another article, since homeowners won't be able to buy neonicots anymore at a store. Jane?
So Terry, that's a reversal of the position they were in last Select Board, I mean, right? They were going to take no position.
Right, they were going to take no position. And so it's not exactly a reversal, but they've, they don't really support the article and they're going to be writing a statement about that. Because it's premature, they want to see how the state law. What happened between then and now is that the pesticide board made this new ruling.
No, I know that. That's, that happened a bit ago, but again, I, okay. I'll make sure those who are working on the neonicots.
Okay. Okay, great. And I attended an MMA Select Board webinar called Civil Discourse. And Michael Betancourt, a Select Board member from Winchester, introduced Jeff Nutting, a retired county manager, and was really, really, really good. There were 80 people participating. I recommend that everybody watch this. I'll send out the link. And basically, one of the recommendations is that every Select Board develop a written code of conduct and have all of our appointed boards sign it when they're signing the ethics code anyway. And it creates a culture of civility. It's a, there's a best practices link on the MMA website. So I'm going to send out all this information to everybody on the board and Stephen. And it reminded me that we used to have a training in Concord that the town clerk would give once a year. Before COVID, we had this. And so it might be time to do it again now, even if we have to do it on Zoom. And there's things like how you deal with conflict, how you herd the cats in your board, how you deal with a citizen who wants to keep talking and you have a time deadline and all these kinds of things. And we had some really good training on ethics and how to run a meeting in the past. So I think probably time for us to do that again. But I'll send out all that information. And the last meeting was library and you've already heard about the admin code. The framing for the children's area is up and they're on schedule to finish the project by year end, which is great. If you recall, Sherri Litback from the trustees was here last meeting, the corporation might fund a workshop position on a temporary basis. So they discussed that for a while. And Lindsay will be writing a letter in support. That was voted unanimously by the library board. The library is excited. They're going to be reopening tentatively on April 5th. Both branches will be opening at both levels, first and second level. And curbside will continue because that's a very popular service for people who don't want to go inside. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Terry. Let's see. I attended the joint school committee meeting and they presented their final FY 22 budget within guideline that they're presenting to the FinCom. They have included in that budget a new position for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And a lot of work went into finding a way to include that in the budget. And that will be working not only with the Metco students, but with all of the faculty on these issues, as well as a continuation of all the work they're doing for staff recruitment. I briefly commented at the last time on the CHCD meeting in terms of them reviewing their updated projects. And also, I believe there's an upcoming housing committee that's, a housing joint meeting and all the housing groups that looks like it's going to be scheduled for the first week in April. The chairs meeting, it was interesting there in terms of where all the various committees are at. And even though we're on an extended time schedule, which is in some cases been responded to differently by each of the committees, either they were ahead of the, because of the last year's scheduling of the town meeting and this year's scheduling of the town meeting, their typical agendas were somewhat skewed in terms of how they've discussed and proceeded with them. So that was interesting to hear. But all of the committees are hard at work and there was, there's good dialogue, I have to say, this year between various committees as they give their reports. If they have a question, they're able to ask each other and check on certain points that are going on or ask for a resource if they need it. So that's been nice to see developed there. And I too heard the MMA forum that Terry is referring to. And so it'll be interesting to see other people's reaction to it. And that concludes my liaison. I've been to some other committees, but other committee members are responsible for them. Okay. I think that concludes our liaison reports. And I will note in terms of miscellaneous correspondence that we have a couple items in the packet that are addressing the proposed use of space at the middle school. And there's also an additional item of correspondence in there regarding Junction Village Park that we talked about last week. And then I'll now open it up for any additional public comments.
Linda?
Yes, Mary.
Thanks, Linda. Hi, this is Mary Hartman. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. I just wanted to underscore our comment that Matt made in his liaison report that we will, in fact, have a dialogue with the co-chairs of the Middle School Building Committee at our meeting this Thursday. So that might be a good way for people to, you know, dial in or attend and get some more information and background. I just wanted to let you all know that. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But before that, remind everyone to be sure to vote if you haven't already done so. Okay.
Move to adjourn. Is there a second? Second? Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Hotchkiss, aye.
That's unanimous and the chair so declares. Thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening. Have a good week.
You too. Thank you.